I saw the photo.
She did it right after?
Yes, right after, uh, right after the roll call.
I actually left her at Neva's. Neva's did her whole.
Does Neva back?
She is, she just got back, so.
Is she in on that? I don't think she does.
She just started back, so.
She was looking for somebody.
All right, folks, we're gonna get started here in just a little bit. Uh, if you have some cell phones with you, please feel free to, uh, put them on silent, if you would. And as soon as we get an on-air flight there, we'll go ahead and get started.
I've never heard of it. No, we're all.
Me as well.
I started putting it in other people's boxes.
What's that?
I just put it in there. I'm like, come on, see if somebody else can read it. Oh, my God. Did you say your home?
Never got that part.
Hail, hail, the game's over here.
All right, great. Well, welcome to the, uh, Zena City Council regular meeting on this Thursday night. And if you'd, uh, please stand with me, we're gonna have a, uh, moment of prayer. And then, uh, after that, we'll have, uh, Councilman Brannum will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And I'll go ahead and lead us this evening for prayer. Let's go ahead and pray. Father, thank you for today. Thank you for your faithfulness and, uh, just the providence in our city. And, uh, God, we thank you for the trust, uh, you've given us to steward items here. And, God, we realize that these are not our possessions and things in the city, they're yours, and we're just stewards of those things. So, God, help us to be wise in that stewardship. Um, pray that you help us, uh, be quick to listen and slow to speak tonight, as David says in the Proverbs. And, uh, God, help us to, uh, to be considerate of other folks. And we pray for our, our crews, uh, that are out tonight, our, our paramedics and, uh, police and firemen. And, uh, God, many times our, uh, our maintenance folks are out, too, taking care of things while everybody else is sleeping and doing those kind of things. We just thank you for those men and women and just pray for safety for them as they're in the streets many times that people would be considerate of them and just walks over their lives. Help them, uh, they have to make many times just some really quick decisions that are gonna affect other folks' lives, gives them wisdom in that. Just praise things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. All right, go ahead and call our meeting to order. And let's start with, uh, our roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Here.
Councilman Scrivens.
Here.
Councilwoman Dean.
Here.
Councilman Brannum.
Here.
Councilwoman Dean.
Here.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
President Ursula.
Here. Next item is approval of our Minister of our August 24, 2023, uh, meeting. Do I have a motion on that?
It's a move.
Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Any comments on that before we, we vote? Okay, let's call the roll.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Brannum.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Upstayed.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Ursula.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item, uh, we've got a great award that's being presented to the city tonight. And Ryan Duke, our Finance Director, would you please, uh, come forward here, up here in the front, if you will? And, uh, we've got Joe Braden, who's what, as our liaison for the Ohio Auditor State. And, uh, Joe, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you.
All right, fantastic, thank you. It's my honor to be here again tonight, here in the City of Zena, on behalf of Auditor State Key Favor, to present the Auditor State Award with Distinction. This puts the City of Zena in a very select group. The Auditor State's Office audits approximately 6,000 entities, and less than 4% are even eligible for this award. The Auditor State Award with Distinction is presented to local governments and school districts upon the completion of a financial audit that meet the following criteria of clean audit. I'm gonna read through this criteria real quick, so everybody knows what the city and Ryan had to go through. The entity must file financial reports with the Auditor State's Office by the statutory due date without extension on a GAAP accounting basis and prepare an annual comprehensive financial report. The audit report must not contain any findings for recovery, any material citations or material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, or any uniform guidance, findings, or question costs. The management letter must not contain any comments related to any ethics referrals, questions costs less than the threshold per uniform guidance, any lack of timely annual financial report submissions, any bank reconciliation issues, a failure to obtain a timely, single audit in accordance with uniform guidance, any findings for recovery, or any public meetings or public records issued. And the entity shall have no other financial or any other concerns. This award represents the hard work of all your city employees, you mentioned them ago, President, and all the financial staff, and everybody that makes an effort each day to attain accounting excellence. I want to recognize all the council members here, the mayor, city manager, everybody's done an outstanding job watching over every dollar here in the City of Zena. But Ryan, I'd specifically like to recognize you, come on up here, for your leadership, your professionalism, and your exceptional commitment to fiscal integrity.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. On behalf of Ohio Auditor State Key Favor, I would like to present the Auditor State Award with Distinction.
All right. Ryan, uh, say a few words here.
No, I wanna, wanna thank Mr. Braden for, for coming. Uh, I know he's got some, uh, some family, uh, events tonight that he's, uh, sacrificing to, to be here with us, so greatly appreciate him taking the time out of his schedule, uh, to come and, and to present this award. Um, really just thankful for, for all the city, the city staff, as he had said. Um, this is, this is not an award for the Finance Director, or even just the Finance Department, um, really across the city. It speaks to, uh, our entire organization doing a terrific job of, of stewarding, uh, the public dollar and, and doing our best to, to do things in a, uh, a way that, um, represents the community and, um, and it's, um, and the council as well. So, uh, thanks for, for coming tonight. Appreciate it. And, um, uh, yeah, thanks to all the, the staff who made this, this.
And before you leave, how many, how many of these have we gotten lately?
Uh, I, I think this is the, the fifth, it could be the sixth, um, in a row, but I'm, I'm not completely positive, but I think, I think it's all of them since 2018, yeah.
All since 2018, that's right, yeah. Joe, and then tell us again, you said less than 4% are considered. How many actually receive this award each year? What percent?
Uh, I don't have the exact number, but less than 4% is what it is.
Less than 4%?
Yeah. As we pull up the shares with this, right?
Yeah.
And like I said, we, not on an annual basis, but overall throughout the state, we audit roughly 6,000.
6,000, right, that's amazing, that's amazing.
Yeah, it is, it's awesome.
Great. Well, Joe, thanks.
Congratulations.
Thanks for coming out and sharing with us tonight. Ryan, congratulations to you.
Congratulations to all of you.
God bless you.
Congratulations.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
See you.
Thank you.
See you.
Well, it's good to celebrate, and I'll tell you, our whole, uh, Finance Department, uh, talk about the ability, it, you, you guys take such a burden off the rest of us because when, when the numbers come out, there's never any question on those things. And, uh, it just helps us with a lot of decision-making process, and it gives us a, a great firm foundation to, to move forward on that, so. So, thanks so much, Ryan, and you, and the whole crew there.
Thank you.
That's been helping us with that.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. You guys get out, actually 10 minutes off tomorrow. All right.
I said no.
All right. Next item, uh, this is, uh, opportunity for audience comments, and if you have anything you'd like to share with the City Council, um, please feel free to come up, uh, state your name and address, and you've got, uh, three, five minutes if you'd like to share with council. So, if anyone would like to come up and share at this time, feel, uh, please come to the podium, speak into the mic, because we are, uh, broadcasting this, and that way folks, uh, over air can hear as well, too.
Hello, my name's Clayton Bray, 370 Hollywood Boulevard, Zena, Ohio. That was an awesome display of excellence. Congratulations to Ryan Duke and his team that, uh, helped him retain that award. Uh, I just felt so good knowing that I've been coming to these meetings and, kinda behind the scenes, but seeing it up front and personal is awesome.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, y'all do a fantastic job. Uh, the Lexington Park Group had a event over the weekend, and God blessed it. I mean, all the people out there, when you do an event, and I know y'all do plenty of them, you just worry about people's safety. Are they gonna be safe? We're having fun, and anything at any time could disrupt it, but it did not happen. We had two basketball games, uh, lot vendors, food, bouncy house, kids running around, having fun. And, uh, one of our team members, uh, y'all know him, Wade Day, Reverend Wade Day, he, uh, pulled up in his pickup truck, and the back of the pickup was just loaded with gifts. He came out with his raffle tickets, and so the, the gifts were free.
Yeah.
So, all he had to do was come up and get a ticket.
Awesome.
Ran out of gifts, he started handing out money. I mean, one lady hugged me, gave me a big old bear hug, she's like, I'm the big cash finally guy. I'm like, no, girl. But anyways, um, getting back to, uh, Lexington Park, uh, continue helping us with that project, really appreciate it, and, uh, the thing, like, I can do to help y'all with any of y'all's events, feel free to ask.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Clayton.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to come at this time and, uh, address council, feel free to come on up. Okay, we're gonna close out the, uh, audience comments. Next, we'll go to old business. The first item on old business is ordinance 2023-25. Uh, this is a public hearing, and this is approving the sale and conveyance of, uh, conveyance of the city-owned property at 774 Cincinnati Avenue to the Green County Fish Food Pantry. This was introduced by Councilman Brannum on April 24, 2023.
Council President, I'd like to move for passage.
Great, thank you so much. Do I have a, a second on that?
A second.
Great. Thanks so much for getting introduced and seconded. And, uh, at this time, uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, City Manager to just give us a little bit of background, and then we'll go into the public hearing.
Yeah, this, uh, property at 774 Cincinnati Avenue was recently conveyed to the city. It was formerly, uh, property owned by, uh, Green County Board of Commissioners. Um, the property is occupied and operated by the Fish Food Pantry, and is part of an overall arrangement the city had established. Uh, it was our intent to acquire the property and then make it available to the food pantry. Uh, this is the last step in that process from a legislative standpoint that would authorize staff, uh, to move forward with the, uh, conveyance of the property then to the Fish Food Pantry, so that they might continue in their operation there, hopefully in perpetuity, uh, or maybe not, maybe that need won't be there Sunday. But, um, but again, it's, uh, our pleasure to bring us to council this evening for a second reading and consideration.
Great. Yeah, just, just for some of you may not be as familiar, the, uh, the, this is our, our countywide, uh, food pantry that operates down on Cincinnati Avenue. Uh, it used to be at, at, on Ludbetter in the, uh, county facility there, and the, uh, county moved it over to the, uh, what used to be the county maintenance buildings there. And, uh, uh, as the, the county moved their, their maintenance facilities out, they made a determination, uh, that they no longer had need for that land and wanted to, uh, gift that to the, uh, to the, uh, the pantry. Um, by Ohio Revised Code, they're not allowed to do that directly, so, uh, they transferred that, uh, property over to us and the city, and that's one of the reasons why you'll see that the sale of it is for a dollar. It's, it's, uh, it's not that that was the only consideration for it, but, uh, but that was part of the process of us then being able to transfer that over to them. I'd just add that, uh, having the high bays in there from the maintenance areas allows them to have two, uh, full walk-in, uh, refrigerated, uh, areas, so as they have a lot of, uh, of meats and dairy products and other perishables, they can store them for, for quite an extended period of time. And it was an ability that they did not have at the other facility over there. So, it's just been a real blessing on the pantry, and they are the only pantry in Green County that, uh, provides, uh, milk, dairy products, uh, fresh, fresh produce and, uh, and, and, and meats as well, because they have that ability to do that. So, it serves just a, an amazing need in our community there, so. Any comments on this before we vote?
Public hearing.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. President.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Public hearing is required for that.
Oh, that's, I apologize, yes. So, this time, we're gonna open our public hearing, uh, and I'll just make a statement about public hearings. Public hearings are not a question-answer, uh, period. I know many of you, this may be one of the few times you come to a council meeting, but public, uh, public hearings are an opportunity for you to make statements either in favor of or against, uh, or, uh, maybe not in favor of or against, just some observations if you'd like, but it's really you, you, uh, communicating to us as the council, and we're here to listen during that time as well. And so, uh, it may seem a little bit odd, we will not respond to you in this, it's not because what you said didn't have value, it's just that, that's the, that's the, that's the process with the, with the public hearings. Uh, we do have a public comment time for the council members at the end of the meeting, and that's when we have a, a chance to give some of our own observations outside of that as well, too. So, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, uh, now, on this ordinance, and if anyone would like to come and, uh, make a statement to council, feel free to come at this time. Okay, I'll go ahead and then, uh, close the, uh, public hearing at this time, and, uh, we had an opportunity for the, uh, a motion and a second, and, uh, comments from the council, so let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Brannum.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Ursula.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Danette Brent, when you, when you think we'll actually be able to, uh, have the title physically transferred over to them?
Well, we have to wait for the ordinance to become effective.
Correct.
Um, I talked to the Assistant City Manager today, and October 16th will be the date that the City Manager can sign the deal.
Great, great. Hopefully, we can have, uh, an event go down there and give, give that to the crew, I mean, the actual document to the folks. So, great, thank you so much. Next item is ordinance 2023-26. This will be a public hearing, and this is approving the planned unit development concept plan for the Highland Green subdivision consisting of 187.836 acres, more or less located on the north side of US Route 42 and the west side of Stevenson Road. This was introduced by Councilwoman Dean on our April 24, 2023 meeting.
I'd like to move for passage.
Great, thank you. Do I have a second for that move?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Scrivens. Thanks so much. Before we have, uh, council comments, uh, and before the, the public, uh, hearing, I'd like the City Manager to make a few statements, and we have one of the staff members gonna give us a little more, uh, background on that as well, too.
Yeah, again, the proposed Highland Green subdivision is a 433, uh, unit master-planned residential community, uh, proposed to be located on 187.836 acres in the northeastern area of our community. Uh, given the significance of the project, um, and the opportunity, uh, we thought it appropriate to give a little bit more context this evening, so I've asked City Planner Brian Fortuner to provide, uh, just a brief overview, uh, reiterating a lot of the points that were in your agenda report and issues that were covered at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Uh, so I'll turn the floor over to Brian, if that's all right.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council, uh, and if, uh, if our IT staff could, uh, bring the image up on the screen.
Brian, just speak up, please.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, just, uh, wanna give you a quick overview of this project, um, just to orient you, the images on your screen of the concept plan that's being presented to you for this development. Uh, to give you a little context, on the right-hand side of the screen, Stevenson Road, uh, running up and down there, US 42 is kind of at the lower right, uh, running diagonally. Uh, the WDC Golf Course is kind of at the upper-left part of the screen, so this development is bounded by those, uh, those, those, those areas. So, the development consists of, um, four different sub-areas, as well as, um, more than half the site being, uh, dedicated as either private or public open space. The, uh, and I'll run through real quickly each sub-area. Uh, Subarea A is the, uh, the, the yellow screen colored lots you see at the right-hand, uh, part of the screen there. That's gonna be conventional single-family homes. Uh, that is going to, there are gonna be about 162 of those, just conventional detached single-family homes on, uh, on private lots. Uh, there will be a private open space area that, uh, encircles that area, surrounds it. It will, uh, include areas along Old Town Creek and a tributary to that creek, as well as the, uh, buffer area between the homes and Route 42 and Stevenson Road. Uh, bike paths will run through those areas. Uh, Subarea B is kind of in the middle of the screen there, kind of more beige-colored lots there. Those are gonna be patio homes. Those are also gonna be detached single-family homes, but they, uh, the way they will work will be true patio homes, meaning that the owners will own the homes, but, uh, they won't have to maintain their yards, and a, a homeowners association will maintain their yards for them. Uh, so it'll be about 99 of those. And then the, uh, just below that on the concept plan is a townhouse area. These will be attached owner-occupied, single-family homes, uh, with two-car garages, uh, there will be about four in a pod and arranged along public streets, and, and those will be kind of, uh, backing up the 42 as well, and between those and the patio home area. Uh, the, in the fourth sub-area, it's gonna be where the clubhouse and the pool is, that would be a private pool for, you know, paid for by HOA fees, and also an outdoor recreation area with amenities such as, um, pickleball, things like that. Uh, there will be trails connecting all those elements. There will also be, uh, proposed bike trail along both Stevenson Road and 42, which, uh, accomplishes some, some of the recommendations in our comprehensive plan. Uh, a large, roughly 70 area, 70-acre area on the west part of the development, the green area that you see kind of in the left-hand part of that development, that will be dedicated mostly as a public park. Uh, the, it will, it will not include any of the proposed detention basins, those will still be privately maintained. But what will be dedicated is a, what, it'll become a nature preserve. The, uh, existing wooded areas there will be preserved, the, uh, what's part of that that's currently cropland will be naturalized and, uh, planted with wildflowers converted to quary, uh, succession, succession to forest. So, that will be converted to a natural area eventually with, uh, initially with mowed trails going through it, and, uh, possibly eventually with, uh, with more substantial trails going through there, uh, to provide access to that area. So, that will be a nature, essentially a low-maintenance, public nature preserve. Uh, mowing would be limited and just consisting to perimeter and trails, and most of the area would be, if any mowing occurs, it would just be once a year for areas that are being maintained as prairies. The, um, so that'll be, the, most of the, uh, open space is being dedicated as a public park. There will be private areas, too, surrounding Subarea A, like I mentioned, area, those will be maintained by the HOA. The, uh, utilities, there are public water and sewer services available to the development, uh, along sewer along the north side of development, and some water lines at the, at the west end. Uh, stormwater will be conveyed, uh, will have to meet, obviously, meet US EPA stormwater standards, which essentially means that runoff from the site cannot increase over what it is now. Uh, they'll accomplish that through typically what you see in new developments, a network of stormwater, uh, drains and feeding into detention basins that hold the water and keep it from running off the site, or at least, you know, release it gradually so that runoff doesn't increase from, from what it is now. The, uh, in terms of service, the city's abilities to service development, it is well within the five-minute drive time area of the city's current, both of the city's current fire stations. Which makes it, uh, very serviceable for, for emergency services. Um, the development is also, in terms of the ability to maintain the infrastructure, it's a clustered development, which means that, uh, the develop, the lots are a little, little narrower than, uh, they are in some of the other conventional developments. Uh, you have a lot of area that's being set aside as open space, so that means the overall density is, is relatively low, but the, the lots and the homes are clustered in smaller areas, that means less road to maintain per home, uh, less, uh, you know, water sewer pipe, stormwater pipe to maintain per home, which works both well, you know, in terms of long main, long-term ability to maintain the area. Um, there is a traffic study underway, uh, for US 42 and Stevenson Road. Those road, uh, Stevenson Road is maintained by Green County, whereas 42 is maintained by the state. Uh, those are actually outside the city, so the city does not have any authority over those roadways. Uh, the traffic studies will look at what improvements are needed in order to accommodate this proposed development. Those improvements will probably consist of left-turn lanes at key intersections, um, and why it would likely occur to, occur on the development side, would not affect properties to the south, uh, or across the street. But the final decision on the, although the city does have input into that process, the final decision for those improvements will be, uh, made by the state and the county, not, uh, not by the city, because the city does not, uh, maintain those roadways. Um, in addition to that, uh, there, that traffic study will also look at the speed limits of those roadways and whether the, or not those need to be reduced. So, those studies are currently underway. Um, they are being adjusted to account for school traffic, and once that's done, they will be completed, uh, the city will get a copy. Uh, those, those studies and the improvements that are required all have to be finalized before any construction is approved of the site. So, before a, uh, you know, the city approves a final plat for the first section, we'll have to have, uh, a final decision of what, what improvements are being made and when to those surrounding roadways. So, uh, developer indicated that if it's approved tonight, uh, they could start, uh, on the initial phase of the, uh, next year, possible construction late next year. What you're approving tonight is just a concept plan. It does not authorize construction to start, it just sets the standards for develop, future development of the site. And the developer will have to come back to both the Planning and Zoning Commission and council for detailed construction drawing approval and final plat approval for each individual phase before construction can start. So, uh, uh, that's just a quick overview, that's all, you know, all I have for you, and I'll, I'll let you get forward with the public hearing.
Great, great. Before you leave, any, any questions from council to, to Brian?
I have one real quick.
Sure.
Hey, Brian, on exhibit B5, um, up here, I think that's on there, the, um, the trail in red, is that a bike trail, or is that a walking path?
Uh, the trail in red, I'm not sure which trail you're referring to.
Looks like it's running along 42 and then around, um, phases, I believe, three and four.
So, oh, I see what you're referring to. We have the basin.
We had talked at planning that this could possibly connect to the bike paths in the city, and I didn't know where we would connect through, um, if that had been discussed with the developer yet.
Right, so there are, plan, uh, this development would, would include bike paths constructed along Stevenson Road and US 42. As proposed in this development, those develop, those trails would not connect to the existing paths, but it would make it easier to build connections in the future. Uh, there would need to be, for instance, a bridge built across Old Town Creek to the north in order to connect to, um, some of them to the south, because there is a trail that runs along part of Stevenson Road in that development. And then, uh, there would also have to be, our long-range plans call for eventual trail connections to the southwest into, through, uh, through the east end, like possibly to Lexington Park, as well as to other areas like, um, like Louise Drive, Wilson Drive. Um, this, this proposal does not, you know, obligate the developer to build those connections, but it would involve, you know, trail, trail building along those roads, which would help us implement the overall plan.
Thank you.
That, that's a long-winded answer, but does that answer your question?
Hello. Thank you.
I got one question.
Go ahead, Cody.
Um, future cost of, like, if there was a need for widening Stevenson or 42, would those costs be passed on to the developer, or is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, uh, go ahead.
Thank you for the permission to speak.[1729.12]
Thank you for the permission to speak. Mr. City Planner, I hope the people at home heard you while you were making your presentation.
I'm sorry to hear.
I see there, there are three ponds indicated. Are these stormwater retention ponds or what?
Yes.
I know there's one that already is there. And it, it doesn't, it doesn't butt out to anything. The one on the left there, I was just at that location just the other day, and.
Those are proposed stormwater detention areas. They could be either ponds or dry basins.
Okay, I see we have a dry basin in the upper right-hand corner. So I see we have three ponds on this property and a dry basin. And we have Old Town Creek running through there. Now, it's a low area.
Yeah.
So now, are we going to be able to channel this stormwater away when, when we have a rain event, a significant rain event?
Yeah, with the, you know, final designs.
Because it's below road grade. All of this area is below road grade.
Below road grade, yes. It's not, none of the areas are in the floodplain that are being developed. So the, final designs have not been submitted for drainage yet, so we, you know, a lot of those details aren't known yet, but they will be required to ensure that runoff does not increase. So runoff into Old Town Creek and other surrounding properties, that, that runoff doesn't go, doesn't increase beyond what's currently happening on the site.
Now, is there a proposed connection to Country Club Drive, or is it go stay a dead end?
That, yeah, there is a stub connection off of that, but in order to connect to, this property does not abut Country Club Drive. So in order to complete that connection, there would have to be, the WGC golf course would have to be developed someday, and there would have to be a road built through there in order to connect it. So that stub is there in the event that that golf course is ever sold and developed, and there's an opportunity to connect that road through.
Okay, very good. I would definitely be interested in the traffic study at, at forty-two and Stevenson. I travel that frequently, and coming over that hill is a blind, a blind spot. And you coming around there at fifty-five miles an hour, and you trying to make a turn, they're gonna have to improve that tremendously in order for this whole development to get my approval. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Sure, thanks. Councilman Scrivens? Any other questions for Brian, who's always here with us, from council? Okay, thanks so much, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
At this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And anyone in the audience who would like to come and address the council, once again, this is a, this is you testifying either concerns or issues or that, things that you appreciate about this or in favor of. So, so it's you providing us statements either in favor of or against this, or just observations you would like the council hear. Once again, this is not a interactive time. This is for you to come and, and provide information for us at this time. If you'd like to do that, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you've got three, five minutes to go ahead and address the council.
I live at six thirty-five US Route forty-two. My driveway comes right out of forty-two directly across from where the townhomes would be built. I'm obviously against it. Just be honest, obviously, I built my home quite six years ago with a great view. That's gone. So, plus with solar panels getting ready to be built behind my home. So, it's been a rough month with letters that I've been getting, but my only real comment revolves around traffic. Today, especially when the universities are involved, we have three universities using that road pretty heavily. It's dangerous. I appreciate your comments. You're exactly right.
I know.
Regularly, and I'm not kidding, speeds of a hundred.
Right.
On that road. They come out, they come out of the town on a thirty-five and they hit that fifty-five, it's a drag race. And I do mean drag race. Many, many times in the last month, two cars going down the same street, same direction at night. Horribly dangerous. So I, I know that the city has no control over that. I appreciate learning a little bit that the state controls that. It was mentioned that you do have some influence. Please, for the residents who are paying our taxes on those, those roads and such, make it safer. Slow it down from the roundabout all the way past Stevenson. Or at least maybe at Stevenson or something, maybe then, maybe fifty-five, I don't know. Going into town, when it goes from fifty-five to thirty-five, that's regularly fifty-five, sixty mile an hour cars passing on double yellow.
Yep.
It's, it's a dangerous road as it is right now. I've got two teenage sons driving. I, I'm out there every single time watching them leave. So it scares me. So when this, this came up when I learned about this last month, I'm like, oh, you've gotta be kidding me. So, you know, four hundred homes roughly, two cars per house, that's eight hundred cars more a day.
Precisely.
So I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. Love the park idea, great. Think awesome. But that's all I'd say. Just keep, just keep the residents, kind of across the street more.
Sure, sure. Thank you so much. Yeah, yeah.
Hello. Hi, my name is Yvette Williams. I'm at eight oh five US forty-two. I am against the PUD. I'm a country girl, so of course I love the cornfields. I can't complain about that and the view, all of that, the traffic just Thursday, what was it, today's Thursday? Just Tuesday, there was a car, the ambulance came that went into the, the ditch, because it does go down far. I guess really what I have to say is my understanding of the agricultural zoning of that area, in order for it to be exempt, the PUD's primary source, which, which I'm assuming is why there's going to be a public park in this private community, would have to be some sort of benefit to the community. Primary source meaning that park would have to be of highest rank or of importance for while we're, while, why, I'm sorry, the PUD's be, being built. I just don't see that being justifiable, just because there are twelve parks in Xenia that are public, there are what, twenty-seven, maybe twenty-four in Green County, twelve bike paths, four which are completely accessible from Xenia. So this, adding a bike path to, I mean, leading it to Lexington Park, Lexington Park really won't be there because of the solar planters that are being built there. So that's kind of silly. And otherwise, a private park and a private, I mean, a public park in a private community just doesn't seem very public. I don't see why that would be the primary source. So I'm not sure how that worked with zoning. I'm assuming that the exemption has already been made. I'm just saying, for me, as far as the community goes, if it's not servicing the community, then it's taking away. And I think until we have a better plan altogether, you know, will you be able to access the bike path and make it so that it is actually of, at high importance? Because, you know, we do love that. It's right across from my house. I love that idea. Otherwise, I just don't see how it is beneficial or if it's, again, primary source. That's why I would assume there's three different wetlands and things like that. That's how you get around the agricultural zoning. But otherwise, I think it's an agriculture town keep it unless you have a better plan is my, just my opinion. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Grayson, twelve seventy-one Eagles Way. It's a very minor comment compared to most of what you've been hearing, but I heard the presenter about the development, say there would be two-car garages in the townhomes. When you read the attachment to the agenda, it doesn't say that. It says that there would be parking off-street, but that's all it would be. And I think that's a huge difference whether you're just going to have everybody in driveway versus in garage.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grayson.
Jerry Mahan, I live at three seventeen Country Club Drive Xenia, and I'm going to come at this from a little different angle. My previous life, I was Ohio State University Extension Educator in Agriculture, Natural Resources and Community Development. I dealt with a lot of farmers' problems, and one of those main ones was dealing with soil productivity. This area has some very, very potentially great soils. They do need some drainage. It's called Westland soils, but it has the opportunity to go, it is on the, on the prime agriculture list for Ohio soils, and, but to do that, it's going to have to have some additional drainage. The other part about farmers utilizing this area, and I've known different ones that have farmed this area, it does, it is productive in most years, but you have to realize that forty percent of our farmland in Green County is rented. That means that farmers are renting farmland from other people in order to make their operation go. And part of that challenge is to find the soils that are most productive, and this area has some very productive soils. So I'm asking you to take a look at that as an opportunity, because soils that are not productive, it costs a farmer more to farm that land, so they don't make as much money off of it, and it becomes a problem in terms of, of making a living as a farmer. The other problem, as I look at this area, part of my job, I worked a lot with homeowners that had moved into plats in Green County, Fairborn, Xenia, Beaver Creek, and probably the number one problem was people moved into plats that had the greatest covering of clay soil on their property. And so we would get calls all the time, people saying, well, I can't grow grass, I can't grow trees, can't grow shrubs, and you go out there, and when the development was made, they took all the topsoil off, and they had a great covering of clay. And it's very difficult to grow much in clay. So soil is extremely important, extremely important in this area. We have more prime soils in Green County than you would believe, and we've lost a lot of them, hundreds of acres in, in Green County because of development. But homeowners want to, want the, want that opportunity. Now, the acreage where this PUD is, is to take place is on Westland series soils primarily. It is drained, if it is drained appropriately, it becomes prime farmland. That means some of the best land in Ohio. We've already lost many acres of prime farmland in Green County, but do we, so you want, lose more? Can we save our best farmland? Farmers, landowners north of Xenia have worked to save the well field. They farm that area, other people just live there, but that's a real benefit. And I guess farmers are wanting the opportunity to farm this land, because it is, has the potential of being very, very productive. Just to give you an idea, what's happening, in the last twenty years, the United States has lost fifty-five million acres of farmland. Now, put that in perspective, that's twice the size of Ohio. Twice the size of Ohio. In that same period, Ohio has lost a million acres. That's equal to four counties in Ohio, the size of Green. We've lost that much farmland. Now, I don't know how much longer we keep going down this road, but I urge you to take a look at this as an agricultural resource. It's some very valuable soils. If we manage them properly, there's farmers that could, I think, do a very good job and have done a very good job there over the years. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else desiring to address the council during the public hearing? I'll go ahead and call the public hearing closed. We have a motion second. Any questions or discussion from council before we vote?
Mr. President.
Yes. Councilman Scrivens, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you, Mr. Urban, for stepping forward and offering us your opinion. I want to thank Ms. Williams for stepping forward and offering us your opinion. Thank Mr. Grayson for stepping forward and offering his opinion. And Mr. Jerry Mahan, I want to thank you, sir. Mr. President, I used to work with Mr. Mahan back in the day when I was health inspector. He was the agriculture extension agent for Ohio State, and I learned a lot working with him. And he's made an extraordinary point that this, especially the proposed park area, is very fertile soil. I've watched this soil grow all my life, and, you know, to take cropland out of production and turn it into homes is one thing, but to take land that's not as productive and put it into homes, that's another thing. Community would like to send access to the bike path before you get my approval. And as Jerry said, over the last twenty-some years, Ohio's continuously losing one of its major things, and that's its agricultural capacity. And it's nice to build homes. I don't have a problem with new developments, but we have to site them properly and we have to use our land properly. And just go in and, as Jerry would say, clean off all the topsoil, and now you've got glacial till and subsoil there. It's not productive soil. And he's right, you can't even grow grass on this stuff. So just want you to know that, you know, like to see new developments, but we have to do it with care and a little bit of the future in mind.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, I'd like to point out, there was a comment on the townhomes, I believe.
Speak up, Wes.
Comment on the townhomes, only having a driveway. It looks, in exhibit C-one, we presented this at planning, that's a two-car garage underneath the apartment unit. So that would be an enclosed garage. I believe that is the design that they were looking for there, so just wanted to earn that to your attention.
And, and I just reiterate again, in terms of our process, what we're proving tonight is a conceptual design. There's a whole series of engineering studies that will be done, both traffic, stormwater, the, we may have some modifications of the physical layout of this as well too, the occurring, before we get to the actual final approval of, of individual self-stations.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Council President, I got one.
Yes, go ahead.
The, the low-maintenance nature preserve is, okay, I'm, I'm always thinking of public service and maintaining. I, I get the idea of, hey, we, we've only got to have some walking paths that we might be mowing, you know, every so often, but actually getting the flowers, the nature planted, I'm assuming, is that falling on the city or is that falling on the developer to, you know, have all that stuff kind of planted? I know we, we went down this trail before on a city park back of Sterling Green, and of course, those areas never took off. It never, you know, grew the natural flowerbeds and that sort of thing that we were hoping for. I just don't want to go down this path again and it'd be a bust, and then now we're mowing that whole future city park area, because the, the nature preserve was a bust.
Yeah, I think I can offer a couple responses.
Okay, sure.
Excuse me, there will be, I think unavoidably, some degree of additional maintenance obligation the city's taking on. There's additional tax base that helps to support that, obviously, and we want to make amenities available to people with this development and this general region of the city. The intent is that under, under the current design, that eventually the, the, the prairie grasses would then ultimately transition toward more of a forested area. So your, theoretically, your maintenance should decline. We've had conversations with Green County Parks and Trails to determine maybe options where there might be some joint opportunities for maintenance and park build-out enhancements. So I think those are, those are conversations that are ongoing. So I think the short answer is definitely there will be some additional maintenance. Our intention is with, with limited budgets, that we want to make sure that we're minimizing that cost. But I think based on staff's overall evaluation, any added cost for those functions over the near term would, would be minimized or would be outweighed by the overall benefit of, of the opportunity for the development.
Thank you.
I would just add maybe two, and this is not something I've specifically discussed with a, with a planner, but, you know, there may be some opportunities in the future to look at additional build-out of more amenities at the site. And I'm talk, not talking in the next couple of years, I'm talking many years down the road. Having site control of the site is important. Another thing that we've discussed even this week, there are regional floodwater issues, not so much with the property we're talking about here, but adjacent to it, adjacent to WGC golf course. Having some site control of some of this property will give us the ability to look at alternatives, to bring some long-term solutions to these problems that have created a lot of stormwater issues on down the line further to the south. This drains literally all the way down to Shawnee Park, the creek that runs adjacent to Shawnee. And so we've been dealing with a lot of issues along Louise Drive and that whole region, and it really is a regional problem. And I think there were maybe not the best decisions made by the city's forefathers in terms of how this overall area built out. So our intent is to begin to study this and how we fix this problem permanently. So there are some sort of accessory benefits that the city can gain through the developments project by the, you know, the acquisition of some of that property, so that we could potentially look at adjustments to that overall drainage system and bring some permanent relief to those adjoining properties.
Great, thanks, Brian. Any comments or questions? Council? If not, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman D?
Aye.
Councilman Brown?
Aye.
Councilman D?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is under new business. This will be ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven. This is an emergency ordinance, and this is amending ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, provide appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Xenia. for the city of Xenia, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency. And we're just going to take about 30 seconds here. Thank you, folks, for coming tonight. We had quite a number of folks over here for that last public hearing. We'll give them a chance to exit. Great. And this will be declaring an emergency for this ordinance. And Mr. Finance Director, if you'd like to comment on this one?
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, my item isn't quite as popular as the last one. But no, we are requesting an appropriation ordinance for three different purposes this evening. The first is related to building inspection services. And we've had a significant number of permits probably exceeding original expectations related to building inspection, resulting in higher fees, but also then higher revenues that offset those fees. And so staff is requesting another $150,000 be appropriated this evening to cover additional fees within NIC we contract for for those inspection services. Stated here in the agenda item that this entire amount, all of these fees, are offset by revenues coming in from permits. And so this actually is going quite well. Obviously, I can't speak to a lot of the operational pieces, but at least from a financial side, this endeavor has been going very well. The revenue is more than offsetting the expenses related to those services. And so any of the services or any of the appropriations we're requesting for or requesting this evening would be more than offset by the corresponding permit revenues. So that's the first piece. The other, the second piece is also related to that. Credit card fees associated with those collections and also associated with utility billing as well and have been much higher throughout the year than what we had originally anticipated. There are some fairly substantial projects with pretty large permit fees that would like to pay for those services via credit card. Kind of surprised me, but there are a good number of contractors who prefer to pay through that process. And so we're requesting additional appropriations this evening to cover those costs as well. And again, I'll say that those fees that we're incurring related to credit card fees, we're building those into rates, whether it's rates for building inspection or rates for utility billing, all of those expenses are incorporated into those rates. And so I see this as a good thing from a practicality standpoint, from an operational standpoint. It's a much more efficient way for us to do business through these electronic payments than a paper check process, those types of things. So more and more people are using digital means for payment. And that requires additional fees to be appropriated again, which would be offset by revenues related to fees being collected in those endeavors. So that's the second thing. The third reason that we're requesting an appropriation this evening is related to the HOPE 6 grant and the project that Xenia is issuing in leather. Council would actually approved previously a couple of loans, two different loans to the owners of that property to facilitate a project to put apartments in the upper floors of that building. None of those dollars were actually lent just yet. That project has encountered a number of hurdles and things didn't move quite as quickly as we had hoped for several years. But we are actually to a point where it's proceeding. And those dollars, while one of the loans was encumbered, the second was not. And the dollars were actually appropriated last year. And so those appropriations lasted. And so we're asking tonight that those be re-appropriated for the loans that council would approve previously. There is an agenda item later this evening where we're requesting some changes to those loan arrangements, the amounts still staying the same. But we are asking for a slightly different structure to help to facilitate that project. But you'll see here a request for $84,800 to be appropriated for that loan, which was authorized previously, but the encumbrances had fallen off. So, or the appropriations had fallen off. So requesting $150,000 for fees to NIC for building inspection, another $60,000 for credit card fees, and $84,800 for the loan to facilitate that project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about any of those items.
Any questions from council to Ryan? Yes, Councilman Scrivens, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The $200,000, we've already appropriated that and it's not been encumbered?
So of the $200,000, what would it be roughly? I think it's like 113,2 or something like that. That portion was encumbered. So the first loan was encumbered, but never actually lent to the borrower. So he's not received any of those dollars yet. The second portion was approved, but never encumbered. There was some question about late last year about whether the product would even happen or not. So it didn't get encumbered. It wasn't included in this year's budget. And so now we're asking that it be re-appropriated. So part of it was encumbered, part of it was not. So it was two different loans, one was encumbered, the other wasn't.
It has all been approved by council, by resolution. Even the 84-8, you did a resolution approving that. It was just never appropriated.
It was authorized, but wasn't appropriated.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions for Ryan? Thank you. Can I have a, this is emergency ordinance, can I have a motion for approval?
So moved as an emergency?
Yes, moved by the mayor, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilwoman Dean? Any other comments before we vote? Thanks. Thanks, Ryan, for all the work on that. All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brand?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is also an emergency. This is ordinance 2023-2028, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $2.8 million of special obligation bond anticipation notes, Series 2023. This will be the third renewal. For the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring certain leasehold interests and matters related thereto, and declare an emergency. Mr. Finance Director?
Thank you, Council President. As council is aware, the city acquired the leasehold interest for the former Townsquare property for $3.3 million, just beyond that. We have sold a portion of that property and used that to pay down a portion of the debt, which brings it now to $2.8 million. We've renewed the notes, the one-year notes, a few times. Actually, the last note, we were only able to go out nine months. There was some turmoil in the market at that point in time, and lenders were reluctant to go a year. We're confident that we will be able to renew this for another year. And the rate that's approved in the ordinance, the maximum is seven and a half, although we think that the rate's going to be less than that, a good bit less than that here for this round. The most recent quote that I got was 4%. Last year was renewed at 5.875%. So hopefully, that holds and we're able to renew this at a lesser amount. I will say, we got a performa from our partner Dylan even just earlier today on the sale of some property and how we would recoup some of these dollars. And I'm growing more and more optimistic as time goes on that we're going to be able to retire this debt sooner than later. There's obviously no guarantee of when exactly that would happen. But I think there's a very real possibility that here within the next several months that we could be bringing back some agreements that will help us to help us to pay down more of this debt or even perhaps all of it. We'll see how things shake out. But obviously, there's great interest in trying to retire the debt. Interest rates are far higher than when we initially started this process. But we are requesting at least another year, another renewal. And we're hopeful that that number, if we bring this back next year for another issue, that that number will be for a much smaller amount. So we're requesting tonight that you authorize the issuance of that one-year bond at $2.8 million. The interest cost is approximately $115,000, that's what we're estimating. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the third renewal of these issues.
Great. Any questions from council for Ryan?
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a second to supplement the finance director. I think we'll be in a position, probably not at your work session roundtable later this month, but I think in October to lay out for council a lot more detail of what these development phasings look like and some of the financials, as Ryan alluded to. So I think, I'd say, give us a little bit more time and we'll be able to provide a lot more detail on that. And I'll speak to some of the expectations in terms of what people can expect with that Townsquare project later this evening.
Sure. Do we have a motion for the emergency ordinance? Moved by Councilman Dean, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by the mayor. Any other questions or comments from council before we vote? Okay, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brand?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is an introduction. This is ordinance 2023-29. This is authorizing the sale and grant of a standard highway easement to the Ohio Department of Transportation on a portion of city-owned property directly across from 1831 North US Route 68. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. The Ohio Department of Transportation is planning to construct a roundabout at the intersection of State Route 235 and 68. This is, of course, just north of the city's water treatment plant. As part of its planning for the project, ODOT has determined it needs a .054-acre standard highway easement from the city on property directly across from our water treatment plant on 68. I don't know what I said, but if it was wrong, I apologize.
No, that's right, just the size.
Oh, did I? Okay. .054. At any rate, this is a very small portion of property there adjacent to the water plant as part of our well field. Review of the...
Of course, we're valued at $100,000 an acre, right?
Well, to that point, a review of the project plans demonstrates that there are no conflicts. And ODOT uses a standard value analysis appraisal of the requested 0.054-acre easement. ODOT has completed this and based on that and in a comparison of similar sales of the last 28 months, they've estimated a unit purchase price of around $15,000 per acre. This at .054 acres therefore means a total offer of $809 was provided to the city. We probably shouldn't spend that in one place, right? City staff has no concerns, this is not property that we necessarily need. And we, of course, find general value in the roundabout as it will enhance transportation safety by many of our residents who commute that route daily. So we are recommending sale and conveyance of the standard highway easement to ODOT. This will be pending the city law director's approval of all associated forms required by ODOT. So again, recommending this introduction for the ordinance this evening and further consideration at future date.
And this is, just for the audience, this is land that's in Xenia Township that happens to be owned by the city because that's where our waterheads are at.
That is correct, yep.
All right, would someone like to introduce this ordinance? All right, introduced by Councilman Scrivens. Thank you. Next item is Resolution 2023-045, approving the final plat for the Grandstone Trace subdivision, Section 1, and authorizing the execution of a subdividers agreement with Grandstone Trace LLC. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. Council is being asked to approve a resolution to authorize the subdividers agreement. This is for Section 1, as indicated, which would contain 30 single-family lots and four open space lots. The agenda report provided to council this evening details the public improvements ultimately involved in the subdivision build-out, among which includes transportation improvements with creation of an entrance off of Fairground Road, some additional new roadway segments, incorporation of a roundabout facility, sanitary sewer connection provided via a main extension along the west side of Fairground Road from its existing terminus across from St. Bridget property to the south side of Hawkins Schoolhouse Road, and water service provided through a main extension from the existing terminus of Hollywood Boulevard along proposed future alignment of Hollywood Boulevard extension. Planning and zoning commission voted at their July 12th, 2023 meeting to recommend to council approval of this final plat as it conforms to the necessary criteria for a PUD final development plans and final plats pursuant to our code. So staff therefore recommends approval of the resolution to authorize the forward movement of Section 1 of the project.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the city manager on this? Would someone like to make a motion on the resolution?
Finally seeing this development.
All right, moved by Councilman Scrivens, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by the vice president. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Okay, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brand?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is a resolution, it's 2023-046, authorizing the execution of a new HOPE 6 grant development and loan agreement with Timothy and Lynn Sontag for the Xenia Shoe and Leather Project at 21 East Main Street. Mr. City Manager?
As a Star Wars fan, I read this and I think it's episode four of HOPE. The agenda report for this...
I said six, I meant it should have been four.
The agenda report for this item that you've received this evening details some of the lengthy, some of the lengthy and complex history of this project. This, of course, is related to the early agenda item on the appropriation. A lot of struggles to identify and secure resource streams to fund this project. After many setbacks, including issues and delays resulting from the pandemic and other factors, we believe we have established a way forward for funding and ultimately executing this project. Key component of the revised strategy involves a modification to the terms and conditions of a loan arrangement previously facilitated by and executed with the city. Council will recall that on April 12th, 2018, authorization was granted for a business loan to provide GAAP funding of $115,200 to facilitate the project. That long term was for 10 years at 2% interest. And this was secured by a promissory note and recorded mortgage on the property at 21 East Main Street. Subsequently, the owners, Mr. and Mrs. Sontag, requested an additional loan of $84,800 with a repayment term for that loan of 12 years at 2%, which was approved by city council via resolution on May 26th, 2022. As a result, a total of $200,000 in GAAP funding via these loans was approved by council for the project. And as reiterated earlier, none of that approved GAAP funding has yet been dispersed, which was part of the reason for the additional item this evening. So over the ensuing time, as final design work's been completed, final estimates established, and with emerging adverse challenges such as interest rates increases for private loans, construction cost increases, so forth, the Sontags have been somewhat reluctant to move forward given what they felt were a really limited margin for error with cost overruns and limited margin for profit in the near term of their project. Because this project is important to our community and the rehabilitation and utilization of these historic structures and to help ease these concerns and improve their near-term return on investment, modifications to terms and conditions of the loan with the city were negotiated by our staff. Under this revised approach, the loan structure would be a 12-year term utilizing, excuse me, amortizing $100,000 with a deferment of payments in the first three years. There would be a balloon payment at the end of the loan for the remaining $100,000 balance. The loan would continue to accrue interest throughout the entire 12-year period, even as the payment is deferred. Staff is recommending this restructuring as it will help to get the project across the finish line and eliminate potential liability for grant funds that we've already spent for this project. So this evening, we're recommending council approve the execution of the new loan agreement to replace the existing. The new agreement will cover both the grant funding and the city-provided funding. Along with the new loan agreement, a new promissory note will be executed. A new mortgage will be executed and filed with appropriate resources to replace the existing mortgage. We are excited to have come across a solution for this. We think this is a really valuable project. And once we demonstrate marketplace for this type of unique historic space downtown for residential, we think it can be a blueprint on how we work with private property owners to rehabilitate these second, third floors of our historic buildings. So this is a vital project that we hope will serve as a template for future projects. So we encourage council's approval of this item this evening.
Great. Thanks, any comments or questions from council to the city manager?
New mortgage, new promissory note.
You know, this, as Brent has said, there's a lot of opportunity in the downtown area for many of these stores that used to have businesses on the second or third floors or shops and those types of things to be able to move towards apartments. It's a real challenge, though, to change utilization from something that is not housing into something that's housing. And a lot of issues you have to deal with access and fire codes and those types of things. So this really is our first foray.
types of things. So this really is our first foray, the Sontags, to go ahead and try and make that happen. And we really would like to see this be successful because if they could pull this off and make this happen, that would really lead to a lot of revitalization of the other buildings in the area. Is that a fair statement, Brent?
Yeah, I think so. And, you know, the first guy in always has the most risk.
Right.
And I think council has been encouraging of staff to help reduce risk for those willing to make an investment in our community. This particular case, we're providing potentially some diversity of housing options, some increased density downtown and where we have existing roadways and utilities. We don't have added roadways and utilities and added expense. So all the way around, it's a benefit. And again, these downtown buildings are old. Many of them have been neglected over the decades. And as the council president suggested, conversion of these spaces to residential purposes has a much higher requirement standard from a fire code standpoint, a building code standpoint. So the cost is much greater on the front end to convert these, where Xenia has had a much softer marketplace in the past, commanding very low price per square foot. We're trying to use this project efforts at the Town Square to revitalize the market downtown, to command higher rates, and that rising tide, I really believe, will improve the value and the lease capacity for all the properties in the downtown. So this is another piece in addition to projects, again, at Town Square, where we think we can help engineer a broader economic impact that'll benefit the community.
Right. Great. Thanks, Brent.
Just one question, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Scrivens. Go ahead.
So the existing promissory note that's outstanding and the existing mortgage, that's going to be terminated or rolled over into the new instrument?
Yeah, please do.
The $84,000, the additional loan that council approved last year but wasn't encumbered, was not included in the loan agreement. So the current development agreement, the current mortgage, and the current promissory note are off for the original amount. The second loan that you approved for the 84, also had different terms.
Right.
So we had two choices. Do leave the existing agreement and promissory note and mortgage in place for one amount, and add another agreement, another promissory note, another mortgage for the additional. With the new terms and then combining, we're doing one new agreement. We currently have a mortgage and a promissory note. You typically don't record promissory notes. You just record the mortgage. So what we will do is we will have a release of the existing mortgage. We'll just cancel the debt because none of it has been expended anyway, and then we will file a new mortgage for the entire amount. There is an existing mortgage on the property, a bank mortgage, but that was already there. So our 2018 mortgage was secondary to that. This mortgage will remain secondary as well. So it didn't really change the status of where our mortgage was. But that's the plan, to go ahead and release the existing and then file a new.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Dean. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is also Resolution 2023-047, determining certain city-owned properties are not needed for any municipal purpose and authorizing the city manager to use negotiations or informal competition for the sale of said properties. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you again, sir. Council will recall the city's taken action to acquire six properties through the tax foreclosure process. These include parcels at the addresses of 271 East Second Street, 422 South Detroit Street, 960 Catherine Street, 88 Kokohana Street, and 469 Chestnut Street. This evening, staff has recommended council approve this resolution to declare these properties are not needed for any municipal purpose, as is required by our code. All the properties have been discussed with the property management committee, which has recommended council find they are not needed for any municipal purpose and authorize their advertisement for sale with the intent that they may be returned to private productive use as soon as possible. The sale of these properties will also relieve the city from any maintenance, mowing, and liability costs. At such point that offers are negotiated for an agreed-upon sales price, staff will still have to return to city council for authorization to commence with any actual sale by ordinance. So as we would have opportunities, we'll be back to council hopefully very soon to be able to offload these properties into private owners who can use them. So we request the approval of the resolution this evening.
So just as a reminder, there are a number of properties that have either structures on them or are vacant that have been underwater for years in terms of tax liability. What that means is basically the taxes owed are at a significant level that no one would want to purchase the properties. In some cases, the taxes owed are more than even the appraised value of the properties. So just kudos to the, to, we have about five county elected officials that had to come into synchronization to allow us to start having the share sales of these properties. So the county auditor, the county treasurer, the county prosecutor, the court of common pleas, and the county sheriff all had to be working together on that process. And these are the first four fruits of that. And the goal, that's five? Five. I apologize for that. The goal is not, and in that process, you go through two rounds of the sheriff's auction. If they're not purchased there, those are with the encumresses of the tax liens, but they can then be turned over to a municipality. So that's the third phase of this process. We believe we have agreements from all the other organizations that taxes are owed on that for them to waive those taxes and would unencumber us from those tax burdens. And I just want to thank the city staff for spending a lot of time. There's, I think, about eight different county agencies and the school district and ourselves as well that have portions of those. So that was, that's a lot of effort as well, too, to go through that process. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, we said, Mr. President, again, echoing the sentiment of gratitude to the county for working to get on top of the situation. We have some of our older communities like Xenia, Fairborn, who are burdened by these challenges. In the fairness of the interest of all taxpayers, we want to make sure that folks who are not paying these taxes are held accountable through that process. For these particular properties, we do believe that they're marketable.
Right.
And we have been very clear with council that as we would look to position to acquire these properties, we don't want to acquire them and hold them.
Correct.
We want to be in a position to, as conveniently as possible, expedite the process of offloading these properties to interested individuals who will return them to a productive use, a tax-paying status. One of the things the staff is actively working on with the law department is development of what we are calling our home preservation program, which would be a program and a methodology to help position these types of properties to, especially when they're historic properties or in properties in historic neighborhoods, that we can ensure that these properties will then be used for owner-occupied utilization, particularly if it's an older structure, and preservation of the historic elements of those structures. So we're looking at this holistically. We really have heard council loud and clear, part of our objective is to attack a lot of these longstanding delinquency, overgrowth issues, lack of highest and best use of properties in these historic neighborhoods that are troubled. So again, working with the county to begin to reposition properties and having strategies on how best to use those properties and offload them. But it all starts with the ability to accept these properties, to list them, and initiate that process.
Yeah. And these properties, we've, the city typically has to provide the maintenance for them, cutting the grass, taking care of any issues, safety issues around the properties because they've been abandoned. They're blights in the neighborhoods. They drag down the values and the incentive for other folks in the neighborhoods to invest in their properties. And so these types of, sales of these properties have not occurred for the last couple of decades. And so kudos to the county. It's not within the purview of the municipality to even be able to pursue this. This has to happen at a county level. So we're thankful for the folks at the county level to step up with this. There'd be no objective for us to take these properties as a municipality, but we have the vehicle then to pursue the release of the tax liens at that point and then be able to turn them over to public use without those tax liens at that point. Like you said, so folks can have productive uses. We'll be maintaining them, get rid of the blight in the neighborhoods, and also then generate tax revenue for all those different county agencies and ourselves that we wouldn't have to be doing the maintenance of the property anymore. So I think we all win in that perspective. So these first five are the first fruits. I think we have anywhere from that word of 100 to 150 additional properties that are going to be in the pipeline. So we'll be seeing more of these type of efforts as well. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, excellent.
Great. All right. Do I have someone like to make a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Councilwoman Dean, move on that. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilwoman Brannan. Any other questions or concerns? Correct. Let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. All right. And one last item, and a really good news item as well at this point. This is a Resolution 2023-048, authorizing the execution of a three-year contract with Pinpoint Behavioral Health for the Public Safety Department's First Responder Wellness and Mental Health Program. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Leadership from the city's Public Safety Department previously applied for and was awarded a state grant to fund a first responder wellness and mental health program, this for our employees of our Fire, EMS, Police, and Communications divisions. The program will include annual mental health evaluations for public safety personnel, with funding also provided for follow-up care as needed. The grant provides specific training that focuses on mental health, wellness, and stress management, and includes oversight and quarterly check-ins to ensure continued health of our employees. To procure these services, a request for proposal was advertised, and on August 11, proposals were received from Pinpoint Behavioral Health, Kettering Health, and TriHealth. All three proposals were reviewed and evaluated based on predetermined criteria by representatives of each of our divisions of our Public Safety Department. It was unanimously the position of the review committee that the proposal from Pinpoint Behavioral Health best fit the needs of our public safety personnel and provided the greatest value for the overall cost of the program. The total amount of the grant award is $102,000, with 100% of the cost being contributed from federal funding for the first two years of the program. The program may require the use of up to an additional $33,000 in local operating funds in 2025 if the grant timelines are extended. If additional funding is necessary, that cost would be distributed among our divisions for Fire, EMS, Police, and Communications. This evening, staff's requesting council approval of a resolution to authorize the execution of a contract with the Pinpoint Behavioral Health. This would be the amount of $99,450 for a period of up to three years for the services for first responder wellness and mental health program. This would be contingent upon the approval of terms and conditions of that contract as deemed necessary by our law director. I would just add on a personal note, I'm exceedingly proud of our public safety leadership, in particular, Chief Mike Bogan, Deputy Chief Bogan, Chief Riggsby, Chief Stutes, our Communications Director Mindy Lane. These are individuals that are career professionals in their particular fields. They care about their employees immeasurably, and they understand the constant threats to mental health that these folks are, our employees are challenged with. And so I commend them for their efforts to pursue this and to provide care for our folks. There's additional capacities that we've been able, through these grant monies, to pursue. We've recently done some additional health screenings, which have provided some really, really positive results. That's something I'd like to share a little bit more with council at our roundtable at your next meeting. So again, just encourage council to approve this and allow this project to move forward, and thank our staff for pursuing this.
So this was, this was an ARPA grant that they pursued?
Essentially, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
I guess the only comment I'd have before we make a motion on this is that some of the discussion that we've had with the council is that our first responders, our paramedics and our police enter into just, many times, just horrendous situations. And all of us have jobs to do, whether it's just taking care of our families or going to a job. And every now and then, we have one that'll just shake us to the core. But many times, our folks are having this happen multiple times a week. And we don't, the rest of us don't see those things. They're not visible to us. But when you're the first one to walk in to a situation where it's life, it literally is life or death for people, or situations that folks have been abused or other types of things, and our folks are there experiencing that right away, and as that happens, week after week after week, you know, those things wear on you. And I was reading through the brochure here on that. And to have an opportunity for them to sit down with somebody outside the situation but understands that, and to take an hour and just have a checkup, right? And they said, you know, like they talked about, it's a neck-to-head checkup, right? It's not the physical orientation. It's, let's just talk about what kind of things you've seen and heard, and how is that affecting you, and then being able to offer, hey, here's some additional resources for you as well. Because that doesn't, everybody's so busy going through the day, right? The tyranny of the urgent just drags you down. A lot of times, you don't have that opportunity. Your buddies don't have that opportunity to even give you that kind of checkup either as well. So just kudos to the chiefs for pursuing this and hopefully, and other stresses, too. When we were in the midst of COVID and everything, folks were working double shifts and covering for folks and just those kinds of strains on the whole system. Brent, is that a fair statement?
That's an absolutely fair statement, yeah.
Yeah. So kudos for you guys for pursuing this and getting this going.
Agreed.
Yeah. Any other questions for Brent on this?
Just to comment.
Sure. Councilman Scrivens.
See, on page five, we have canine therapy, equine therapy. Should have a little feline therapy, too, considering I have cats.
You think those cats are really caring?
Hey, it keeps that mental health good, right, doesn't it?
All right.
No, seriously, this is an excellent program. And as you said, you know, you can see stuff, and you don't think it bothers you, and then you can't sleep, and you figure out it's bothering you. So this is excellent. I would just applaud the group who went out and sucked this grant.
Okay. Do a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Brannan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Dean. Any other comments? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. All right. This time, it's time for our appointed officials to report. So start with our finance director.
Thank you, Council President. Do want to thank again Joe Braden for coming down from the Auditor of State's office. I certainly wasn't expecting to be called to the podium and certainly not expecting to be asked to give a speech, which was evidenced by the speech. But, no.
That's part of the caiman for that round.
In all seriousness, this award, it does mean something. This is, this is not easy to get. There are some awards that we get that you pay a fee and they give you the award.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there are some that certainly mean more than others. We have people in each department throughout the city who do a terrific job of following policy and procedure. And if one of them doesn't do what they're supposed to do, then we may not be receiving this here tonight. And so I'm super thankful for our finance staff. We've got people who really care, and they take very seriously stewardship of the public dollar and work really hard to do things right. And Jason Lake, our Assistant Finance Director, I should have mentioned him earlier. He puts in a ton of work on our annual financial report. That annual financial report is a significant undertaking. It is, it is a difficult deal to put together and only getting more difficult. I mean, when I started with the city, you know, in 2005, there may be a new Gatsby pronouncement, you know, once every couple of years. Now, there's three and four pronouncements every year with new standards and new requirements, and it's difficult, and it's a lot of work to put that together. So putting together a report that doesn't have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, it may not sound like a lot, but you miss one number.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, you're getting a finding from the auditor. It really doesn't take much for them to say, hey, you missed this and you've got to correct it. So, you know, for anybody who doesn't know how that works, if, so we have to submit to the state via their Hinkle system, our report, and that's due at the end of May. And when the auditors get through their audit, if there is something that needs to change in that report.
Right.
If there's anything material that has to change from the time that we submitted to when we get through the audit, then that's a deficiency, and we aren't eligible for this award. And so it's significant that you put together that whole report, get through all of those things, and then at the end, the auditors say, yeah, there's nothing of significance that we need to change in this. So Jason's done a terrific job with all that. Our finance department's done a terrific job. And really, as an organization as a whole, our staff does tremendous job adhering to best practices and policy and procedure to make sure that this happens. So just wanted to, again, underscore that this does show and display that our staff is doing a really good job. is doing a really good job across the board to comply with all the things we're required to comply with. So that's all I've got this evening.
Sure. You know, when he said they do 6,000 audits, that's all municipalities, all villages, all townships, all counties, all school districts, all state agencies. And out of those 6,000, he said less than 4%, the number I saw last year was a little bit over 1% got this award. We're talking 100 out of all of those agencies and organizations, only 100 in the state get this award. Now, think about that, right? And so this is, you know, if you think about that number, and like Ryan said, one discrepancy would knock you out of that running. And really, part of the reason they set this award up was to encourage all those agencies to have consistency, right, in terms of how they're managing their finances and keeping the books open and public as well, so that the public has trust in terms of how we're managing those funding. So once again, thanks to you, your guys, and all the staff, everybody involved with that. And to have an organization that's won this five years in a row, now think about that, right? That's just incredible. Very, and out of that, 1% to 2%, very few of those have had repeat awards across the time. Yeah, so kudos to you guys.
Thank you.
Better not break it.
No pressure.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Good. All right, any questions for the finance director?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Law Director.
Well, I think that counted as a second speech. But I did want to point out what you've kind of already said, and congratulate my colleague. Ryan took over as Finance Director in July of 2017, so his first full year of Finance Director was 2018, which means the city has gotten this award every year that Ryan has been Finance Director, and he really does deserve to be recognized for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that was all I had this evening.
Okay. Any questions for the law director? City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Several updates and a couple reminders. In the way of spending money, staff from the Finance Department and City Manager's office are neck-deep in budget preparation, five-year CIP preparation. So again, we'll be working with the Budget and Finance Committee through the fall year and return to council late in the fall with some projections and recommended spending plan for 2024. So just to remind you that that is underway. Also, as we've communicated to council, we are initiating additional phases of community outreach for our next plan. We encourage folks to make themselves aware, visit us online for information on the different venues and dates that we'll have opportunities for solicitation of public input, really setting, you know, the course for the future of our community through that next plan process. So I encourage folks to look into that. Want to remind council that staff is working with our law department, looking at our utility code and public service reorganization. A lot of efforts there underway, anticipating that we will have some recommendations and some opportunities for code amendments for the Public Service and Utilities Committee come October. We'll probably need a couple of meetings with that group to be able to review proposed changes there, so for that committee, please be aware of that. We want to remind folks that we have a couple of events coming up, our last Neighborhood Night Out of the year. We encourage folks to come out and invite council to join us on September 19th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. This will be at Arrowood Elementary School. So please come out, learn more about services locally, we'll have some food available for folks, pre supper, and so come out and talk with our fire forces, police forces, city leadership, just learn about what's going on in the community. And then one of our premier events, our Harvest on Main, will return on October 14th. This will occur from noon to 5:00 p.m. downtown. Some new activities this year, including a pumpkin, excuse me, easy for me to say, pumpkin carving demonstration. We'll also have cornhole at this event. In addition to all of the favorites that we've had in past years, this is a really good family event. We encourage folks to come out and participate in that event. And then I'll just leave finally with a little teaser. We are anticipating some major announcements regarding the future of the Town Square site. We'll be, we'll have some visuals and some announcements as part of that Harvest on Main, so join us for some information on that at the Harvest on Main on October 14th. So again, fall activities coming up, and with that, I am finished.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Okay, great. Let's go to council comments at this time. Councilwoman Dean.
Nothing done.
Thanks. Councilwoman Brannan.
Congratulations to Jason and Ryan on the award. That's awesome, and staff. BZA met on August 28th. I think that's the right one. Yes. Nope, I don't have the right one. Not that. That was not the right. We met and we heard two different cases. One of the cases was a, geez, a proposed solar, fencing around a proposed solar farm out 42 in Old 35. Part of the area is actually on township property, and then the other part is on city property, so they're both going through, they're going through the different zonings of each township and the city of Xenia. Basically, it was for approval of using a different fence material. Our land development code for agricultural use does not steer away from any type of solar, so there was no hoops for them to jump around, they just wanted a different types of, type of fence material. That was approved, I'm trying to think what the other one was.
Highland Drive, Infill Lot.
Oh, yes, Highlander. There was a lot that was previously, that was part of the initial development. The individual was wanting a little bit bigger road frontage, a little wider, and it was approved. Basically, if the individual would have went through, as soon as the development was proposed, they would have been AOK, but for the fact that it was kind of on the backside in one of those lots that hadn't been developed recently. So also would like to pass on my condolences to the Public Service Department with the passing of Mike Creswell. He was 51 years old. He served 18 years in the Public Service Department, so.
Thanks, Cody.
That's all I have.
Councilwoman Scrivens.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to express a deep sympathy and condolences to the family of Mike Creswell. Understanding he was the fellow who sprayed the yellow around town, and we ran out of paint about the same time he passed away, so hate to see him go. Mr. Brady has gone, but I wanted to congratulate him. Is he still there? Oh, Mr. Brady's still here. I wanted to congratulate him and his Lexington Park group on its successful Charles M. Green Tournament. It was the first time that they had sponsored that. It was an extraordinary turnout. We have to improve the parking at Lexington Park. People were parked everywhere a car could be parked, and we need to improve that situation. Congratulations again to our own Mr. Ryan Duke. I started serving on this council in 2018, and every year, he showed his self and he showed his metal, and he's one of the guys that makes Xenia a wonderful place to live. So we want to tip our hospitality hat to him and say, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And keep up the good work. Also, Mr. President, the Xenia Boys Varsity Football Team is going for their fourth straight victory. Also, the seventh and eighth grade, the blue and the white teams, they're just racking up, just racking up victories, scoreless victories. So I think I saw one thing where our team have scored now 191 points to 22 so far. So we have a new stadium, I mean, we just, Xenia's on the precipice of stepping out there. We have new housing developments coming in all over town. We're turning dirt downtown, around town. This place is booming, and Xenia is a wonderful place to live. We have wonderful people here, and we have to respect their opinions. And sometimes they don't agree with what we want to do, and we have to hear that. Also, Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee met under my chairmanship, of which you serve on and Councilwoman Dean serve on. We met on September 5th. All of our fire, emergency, and police, and except for communications, they weren't present. But Major Osborne was there, Chief Stutz, Chief Rigsby, Chief Bogan, and we talked about a thing that we really need to get a grip on, and this is this new 9/11 board that's been structured, of which we do not have a voice in, and we're pretty much the progenitors of everything that goes on. So for us to not to have a voice is a short-sightedness, I guess, coming from the state legislature. So we need to act on that in some way soon. We're going to be updating our emergency response plan, and that's going to be an intricate situation. We hope to have some training involved with that, not only for the emergency responders, but for us council people. We have to know what's going on, and we have to approve what's going on. So we need some training also. Understand that we might be planning a tabletop exercise in March or September to actually see how we're going to react in a disaster or emergency situation. Xenia should be prepared. Xenia should be the forefront of preparedness. And I think with the city manager's leadership and the chiefs of services involved, I think we're going to do that. We had a special presentation regarding armored rescue vehicles, and Detective Bob, I can't pronounce his name, is it Sweetheart?
Swihart.
Say it again?
Swihart.
Swihart. He did an excellent presentation on SWAT and its use, and hopefully not abuse, but the vehicles that they've been acquiring, and hopefully maybe Xenia may get to acquire a vehicle. And with that, Mr. President, just an update that the Public Safety Committee is meeting, and we're doing things that need to be done in terms of Fire Station 32. We're going to build a fire station one way or another, and we're going to ask our citizens to step up and fund it. As a matter of fact, I think we might be placing an issue on the ballot in November, and it'll be directly for public services, fire, police, and EMS. Xenia's expanding. We need to expand our fire, emergency, and EMS, police. Everything needs to expand because we're getting more people, more houses. So we just need to move forward, and we're going to ask our citizens to move forward with us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Right. Just one of the, I wanted to thank the folks from the city of Kettering that also drove up their SWAT vehicle so we could take a look at that. You know, they've got plenty of things that they need to be doing anyways, and to take the time out and allow their vehicle to come up and let us tour that and review that, so just really appreciated them. You know, just good collaboration there as well. Okay, sir. All right. Councilwoman Dean.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything else to say.
Vice President.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, congratulations to Ryan and your department. An organization's only as good as its people, so tell them thank you from council. And also, another thank you to Mr. Brady, who's out here, just all the work that you do in the community, not just Lexington Park, but the, just gratitude for what you do with the youth and recreational programs that you've tried to do and you've succeeded at. And so I just want to thank you personally for that. We did not have a planning and zoning meeting for the month of September, so our next planning and zoning meeting is scheduled for October 11th on a Wednesday, and we'll get in deep into some next plan notes from that. So I'd like to thank Mr. Fortner for all his work on that, and look forward to that meeting as well. Did have a meeting just past Tuesday. The Finance and Budget Committee met with city staff. That's chaired by myself. Council President Urschel's on that, and Councilwoman Lee Light Dean. We all attended that meeting on Tuesday, and we talked about our current financial projections and our 2024 budget, and some other budget-related items, looking at possible use of leasing fleet vehicles instead of purchasing due to the supply chain issues. So again, thank you to city staff who works diligently for spreading our tax dollars with what we have to work with. So again, thank you very much, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The X-Rac team did not meet in September, but I do want to mention that we are right in the midst of our annual tree sale, so if you are interested in purchasing a tree, you have until September 23rd, and then the pickup is October 7th. You can get onto the city website and find out the details and what you can get. That's all on our website. Also, on our website is the next plan, I believe the dates are up for community involvement. September 19th at the Neighborhood Night Out, you have a chance to come and to give your input, what you want to see in the next plan, our strategic plan. There's a few other dates that are going to be listed, of course, the Harvest on Main, food truck rallies the next few Fridays, and a few other things. So if you are interested, I believe, in the truck or treat as well, October 24th is an opportunity, so please, Xenia, come out and make your voice heard. We want to hear from you, we want to get your feedback. Schedule for the last couple of weeks, it's a little bit longer just because we haven't met in a few weeks, for three weeks. So I did want to give a report from the National Everybody Eats Week for Wendy's Row. The reason I want to report that here is because so many of our first responders participated in that, and they had a friendly competition to see who could raise the most money for the Pay It Forward Meals. That was our police department, sheriff department, Ohio State Patrol, our firefighters, and our dispatch, and Green Memorial, the staff there. So they all took different shifts. I got to take a shift with one of those groups on Friday, the 25th. I will tell you, the sheriff's office won the award this year. We congratulate them, but enough money-
When Sarah said they were taking shifts, they were serving tables, clearing tables, I mean, they were-
Taking orders-
Taking orders, right.
On the phone, so, and literally when I served with them, yeah, I was taking orders on the phone, doing all the things, washing dishes, and just being available. So that week in particular raised enough money for 6,000 comto meals, so that is a huge win for Wendy's Row, we're really excited about that. Saturday, September 2nd, had an opportunity to attend the STEAM School ribbon cutting and speak at that. So excited to see that school underway and the work that they're doing, toured the school, and the way they're approaching education, the kids there, it's really exciting, and I, just a lot of good things on the horizon. Wednesday, September 6th, had an opportunity to go out to the base and attend a farewell event for Sergeant Foley, who's part of the Band of Flight. She's been, she loves this area, and I was really excited to hear her perspective on Green County and the Xenia area, so had a lot of fun doing that. Also attended a mayor's roundtable with Congressman Mike Turner that day on Wednesday. Had some really good thoughts about being more involved as far as job opportunities at Wright-Patt, especially with all the retirements that are coming up over these next few years. Saturday, September 9th, attended the SOS Ministries Gala, also had an opportunity to speak at that and congratulate them for the work that they're doing, working with women who are caught in trafficking and addiction, the rescuing that they're doing, and the ways that they're helping their base here in Xenia, but their work is all over the state of Ohio and into Kentucky. So Carolyn and Jared Mybird are just, they're phenomenal people and doing great work here. Sunday, September 10th, participated in Kettering Health Network's Taking Amit Cancer, their Physicians Cup Trap Shoot. Couldn't lift my coffee the next day, but I held my own, but it was a really good event and fundraising for the Green and the Soin Medical Foundation. Monday, September 11th, the city manager and I had an opportunity to meet with the new president of Liverforce, Dr. Newkirk, as well as Dr. Jones, who is the chief of staff, vice president, chief of staff. They're really excited about being involved in Xenia. They've got some really great goals for their growth there, and I think there's some really good partnerships coming down the pike. Also, that same day on the 11th, was able to swear in two new Xenia firefighters, so congratulations to Austin Atkins and Ryan Hollingsworth, we want to welcome them. Tuesday, the 12th, went to the Green County Township Association trustee meeting with Councilwoman Urschel. Learned a lot.
Yes.
Will be going more often.
Yes. Will be associate members.
Yes, we will. So just, good to hear, just kind of some county-wide perspective and ways that Xenia is, as we said, doing a lot, and we're supporting a lot of things there. Wednesday, September 13th, mayors and managers started back up. We attended that yesterday in Beaver Creek. I don't think there's really anything to report.
Lot of consequence.
Yep. And Thursday, September 14th, today, I had an opportunity to be on a panel for the Greater Dayton Area United Way at their fundraising summit. It was talking about the importance of- It was talking about the importance of working with your nonprofits within your community and how we partner together and work together with your local government and your nonprofits. As has been mentioned already, of course, Mr. Duke and Mr. Lake, congratulations. Please pass that on, like, to your staff, and I know that you guys do truly incredible work. We are very proud of you both. And as it's been said, also, I wanted to extend my condolences as well to Mike's family, to public service, and to let them know that I'm praying for them, and it has to happen, my family. So we are very sorry for your loss. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. We have a public service and utilities committee meeting on September 7th, and just thank the staff for all the great information, Chris and your guys, for all the things you guys put together for us. One of the major items there is our stormwater building methodology and also getting the additional funds we need to address some long-term capital improvements with the stormwater system. So stormwater abatement, basically, as you know, when it rains, all that water that hits improved areas in the roads has to go someplace. And when you're in the township, that's the ditch, right? That's where it goes.
Correct.
Right. But when you're in the city, we don't have those. So you got to route that somewhere. And this system has been in development since the first day of the city and has been incrementally added on to through the centuries, I guess I'd say, from that perspective. And a lot of the older portion of this just have desperate need for help. So the other thing is that we've previously have done funding of this through an assessment or through our, you know, utility billing. We all pay that. But a lot of folks who have a lot of stormwater being removed off are paying the same as those of you that may be on a fifth of an acre in the town. So the staff did a lot of work saying how it could be more equitable in terms of the water that's being removed from both, from industrial and commercial locations versus private property. And more to come on that, but our hope is that as we get this new assessment methodology fielded next year, that we'll actually be able to start doing some fairly major capital improvements that we desperately need here. So thanks for everybody that was involved with that. I just want to say kudos to Curtis and Clayton and the rest of the crew. One of the things is we were looking, we had a community group, two years ago, came in and said, hey, we need some help at Lexington Park. And part of the challenge with that is we don't have a parks department anymore. We lost that in 2008 with the economic downturn, and when the state decided that the, you've heard things called local municipal funds, that was basically part of the funding provided by the state as they collected our sales taxes and other items. And they healed themselves in that 2010 timeframe from the economic downturn by withholding those, a good portion of those funds from the local municipalities. And the response to that was, well, we got to cut something. So along with another, other items, the Parks and Rec Department went away. And with that, also, some long-term planning for the parks and those types of things. Is that a fair statement, Brent?
I think so.
Yep. And I will just say that those funds, even in good times now, have never been returned to us by the state. And as a matter of fact, they tended to continue to decrease incrementally, a slow bleed from the local municipalities over the time. But one of the challenges we gave the folks that were advocating for the parks is said, you know, we can do improvements, but we need somebody to help sponsor activities out there. We don't have the staff here in the city, and we probably will not have the staff anywhere in the near time. So those, the group got together, called themselves the Lexington Park Group. Tommy?
Tommy's got their shirt on right now, and there you go. And their first big event was this basketball invitational. So Tommy was out there, and I went out as well, too. And I was just wondering what that park would look like when it's really being utilized to its maximum ability. And it was, it was life-giving. It was just life-giving to go out there, see families out there enjoying a great activity, young guys out playing on the basketball court, and just the buzz. It was just all a really healthy buzz. But one of the challenges is that there just is not sufficient parking to support those type of activities. And so the side streets are very narrow, and they can't support parking on the side streets. A lot of our other neighborhood parks, at least you can park on the side streets because there's parking there. We don't even have that available to us. So I just encourage everybody that's involved with that, with your, you know, with your group, get into that next plan and make some comments. And it would be great to see folks coming and advocating that to be a community park versus a neighborhood park. And I think there's a lot of opportunities for that. But anyways, I just want to thank you guys for taking the challenge and getting that first big event upcoming, and hopefully there'll be a lot more of those happening as well, As you may have seen, there are a lot of things happening in town. And so, and these are positive things, you know, in terms of developments are going on, and we're going to continue to see more of these every meeting that we have. And expansion of things just also put additional burden on our staff as well, too. So I just want to commend our law department. A lot of you don't know that Danette, as the chief bottle washer and cleaner, has to oversee.
To do.
Our service to the municipal court, which is mandated by law. But also, all of these contractual items that we do requires contractual documents and investigation, make sure, just like Ryan is keeping us safe financially, Danette's keeping us safe legally in that. And Brent, you know, we brought in the building inspection, and as we've said, that's going like gangbusters. That's a huge addition to the city right now. And that, I just would want to commend you guys. That's stepped off well in the right direction, and all I've heard from, with one exception, but the majority of folks I've heard are very well pleased with that. So I want to, I also had an opportunity, I go to the Xenia school board meetings, the county commissioner meetings when I can, Xenia Township meetings, and then now the Township Association meetings as well, too. And I just want to really commend our, Brandon, our county administrator and the county commissioners. We've had a number of items that we couldn't pull off without being able to step forward with those guys. And especially the call center items and some of the things that are going on right now, we've had some really good collaboration. So we've, also, you guys had chartered us to have a smaller group to meet with our state legislatures, and we have done that, and met with both of them and voiced some concerns. We chartered a smaller group to meet the school board, and we went and met with them and had some discussions with them. And just to let you know that the mayor and I have had a couple of meetings with the judge, Judge McNamee over in the court, and we're looking to continue our collaboration with them as well, too. So all these things take time, and our staff has their plates full already, but they're stepping up to help us with those other things, too. So I just would encourage all, everybody on council to take some time, and as we're in the middle of these things, take some time and tell the staff you appreciate it. Because I think what Brent said is they're extremely busy. They're all good things, but when you're balancing 20 plates and spinning them, even a good thing falling off or crashing is going to look bad. So they're keeping them all going for us. And just want to tell you guys, thank you so much for that. Yeah, and I just appreciate the collaboration from the school board. You know, we would not be able to move forward with getting these blighted properties moving unless the school, the school board is the principal owner of those lees.
Basically, sure.
Yeah, 67%, 67% of the tax, property taxes go to the school. Without them stepping forward to be a part of that, we couldn't move forward. And the other thing I'd just say is, we have some key things that are going on in our city that are just going to draw people here. This new stadium that the school's put together is a premier stadium.
Top show.
And it's not just being used by Xenia City Schools. There are events happening every day now, and other school districts actually are coming in and other folks to come and use the stadium because of the quality of it. The fairgrounds is no longer just a county fairground that's set empty for the rest of the year. There are events happening every week now. And it's an event center, really, and folks coming to town with that. And the John Wooden Center, as it's up and running, is going to bring in tens of thousands of folks to our city as well, too. So a lot of things positioning themselves here where folks are not only going to be living here in the city, and the Honda battery factory, this isn't just for Hondas. And then the next phase, which is going to be a whole new set of complex abilities, the first set is 2,300 jobs, but the next set is to start providing for GM. They're looking for this to be the battery manufacturing center for all of North America. And you can think about that and all the ancillary factories and support infrastructure and transportation, all the things that are associated with that. And we're the closest large metropolitan area to that whole complex that's coming in. I mean, that's basically built in, because of its access to 35 and 71, that's a prime location. But there's no municipalities at that location. We're one of the closest things. So we're looking to work with Dayton Development Corporation and the County Development Organization and some others to really take advantage of that. And I think we're going to see a lot of growth on the east side of town. I know that I've had a lot of comments that folks have said, hey, it seems like we're pushing everything to the west side. And what's going to be interesting here is in the next five to 10 years, we're going to see tremendous growth on the east side of town as well, too. And I think a lot of other business organizations are going to be springing up there as well, too. So everything is just primed for us here in the city. And we, once again, this is all public trust, and we need to maintain this well. And so thanks, everybody on council for, I mean, you heard all these committees that we've set up to look at these various things, so the whole council doesn't have to dive into these things. We can have a subset work with the staff. I just appreciate the staff stepping up to work with us on that as well, too. So that's all I have for tonight. Thanks, folks. Stay safe, and we'll see you at our next meeting.
Let's have a motion for adjournment. Move by Councilwoman Dean. Do I have a second?
No second.
Second by Councilwoman Dean. Let's go ahead and call a vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Madam Mayor?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.